Amy gets mad at me when I bang my gavel. Okay, so the issue now before us is determining who the reviewing body should be for the future development plan review and the site plan review applications. Our choices, at least the ones proposed here, are city council, ARB, or ART. I guess P and Z is an option, right? But we would have never done that.
Since it's in a historic district, it would most- more- mostly be ARB.
ARB, okay.
But I don't think the code precludes it from-
I don't think it does. I think we could pick one.
Yeah.
Anybody have any discussion? Anybody want to make a motion? What do you want to do to address this?
I'd like to- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see it go before the ARB. I think, you know, whatever attempts we can for consistency and preservation of our integrity, I think it's important that it go before the ARB.
Any other comment?
I think it should be city council. This is our project.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Anne?
Mayor Peterson.
Wait, wait, hold on. Did you have something?
We aren't voting on it.
I did, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was distracted.
It's fine.
It's been a long night already. I'd actually like to see a joint group with ARB and with council. You know, we- I would. I know it's unconventional, but that's just what I'd like to see, for a variety of reasons.
Motion on the table?
Is that something that-
It's like some discussion.
Sure.
I mean, is anyone else on board with that at all? I mean, or- because if no one is at all on board with that, I'll just shut up.
No, it's an interesting idea.
Right. The code currently just provides for three options. And so really, to do something, we could definitely require collaboration and joint meetings and input, but the code as written, I think, has just those three options.
Can- is there anything that prevents us from requesting ARB to attend whatever hearing we have and have them come up and talk? I mean, we can let them talk as long as we want to, right?
Absolutely.
It's our meeting.
Absolutely.
So legally, you're saying this is a multiple choice?
Yeah.
And both is not one of the choices?
That's true. Okay, is this the ABD thing again? I picked D, I'm sorry.
You picked D. But we can, I think that, for me, I think it's a good idea. The more cooks in the kitchen, the better, in this case, I think the soup could be. So, I mean, I would support city council, but I'd ask for ARB's participation. I don't know how else to do it.
I think you'd have to ask yourself, who conducts the final vote? That's really the key of this. Having joint work se- you know, having a joint session, as you were suggesting, or having input certainly is the way to get to that. Nothing wrong with that. But who's going to make the final vote is what-
And that's why my suggestion was city council. I think it's us who needs to take the responsibility for this.
And when we've done that in the past, if I may interject, ARB has reviewed them informally at each step. So ARB could review this informally, as we did prior to this application coming forward. That is what we have done historically, so.
As any- I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just- so we've all discussed how our dissatisfaction with the process thus far and the ability for us and anyone else to weigh in on this along the way. And now we're eliminating yet another body from participating. So we are doing the very thing that we say tastes bad in not allowing an additional level of review from the members of our community.
I just think the final review is ours. And if, you know, we decide that ARB should be involved in a discussion, I think that's fine. But the bottom line is, this is a council project, and I don't know necessarily what ARB would do with a building like this. This isn't, you know, this isn't a historic building. It's on the edge of the historic district and it's, you know, it's morphed out of something, in my view. It is not what we just decided with our votes.
Well, they did the same thing with the condos across the street. It wasn't a historic building that was torn down. And they built a condo building that I think we can all live with, to a large extent. And they did it. They've proven that they can do it. This site is really no different than that. It's an old building that's getting torn down, that did not- was not historic in nature. And they reviewed it and approved it, and it is nearing completion.
Christina, what do you think? I mean, if we do it, if it's council with ARB here, are we getting the best of both worlds? What do you think?
Well, I can't get what I want, so.
Well, you keep picking D.
I can't get option D, so.
Our lawyers say that's not an option.
You know, motion your hearts out.
All right, well then, Amy made a motion. Mike seconded.
Mr. Leckleiter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms.
No.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo.
No.
Okay.
Basic plan review of library parking garage.
I'll try to be thorough, but quick. Okay. Same site, just to the west. The background, including the introduction, all the way through to how we got here today is the same as with the library, as well as the review process. We are in the basic plan review stage of this. So obviously, as we outlined with the previous application, we'll have a subsequent reviewing steps for other applications. Same three motions tonight for the basic plan, the waivers, and the required reviewing body moving forward. In terms of the proposal before you this evening, then, we have the proposed garage building, which has 549 parking spaces. There are three pedestrian entrances, which include, depending on location, stairs and elevators. One adjacent to the library main entrance, along the plaza, along this east elevation, as well as then one at the northwest corner, which provides access then to the grounds of remembrance. And then, an additional one here, then at the southwest corner, to help provide access to other development within the historic district. With then two vehicular access points along North Street at the ground level, as well as then on a second story on future Franklin Extension, with then an exit only for a proposed book drop that exists on the- or is proposed on the ground story of the garage, as well as then a bike hub adjacent to that entrance along Rock Crest Parkway. This was similarly reviewed by ARB at the same- excuse me, ART, at the same meeting as the library building. So we have some similar waivers related to the block length and perimeter, given that the site design for both of these are aligned. So the waivers related to the length and the perimeter are the same for this. They also have similar waiver requests for block access, which in this instance are related to the book drop. So having vehicular access onto Rock Crest requires a waiver, as well as then block access as well. So code limits that with this proposal. There'll be two waivers required as part of that. Similar conditions about demolition timing of that application, as well as we added a condition about additional public entrances to the garage, or pedestrian entrances, excuse me, that be investigated as we move forward. In addition to some circulation related to the book drop, making sure that that is clear, that that's when you exit the book drop, that that is a right-only turn, that we're not causing conflicts on Rock Crest Parkway. So want some additional opportunities to work with the design team to resolve that, as well as a similar street network modification, as we outlined for the library, since we do not have a connection through there, as well as then that additional detail related to landscaping and lighting, utilities, stormwater, all those details that'll come with future phases of application. In terms of the requirements for the elevation, so the top elevation shows you what is facing the library, and then the lower elevation then is what is along Franklin Street. Waivers for that include building stories. There is, similar to the library, in that two and a half is permitted, three is requested on three of the elevations, given the proposed design of the garage. In addition to the ground story height, there are two waivers related to that. Twelve is what is permitted, eleven is requested, in order to keep the height of the garage down. So they're asking for waivers to be a little bit shorter, in order to get not increase the height of the garage building, as well as the number of towers. There's multiple waivers related to that. The code permits one tower. Obviously, we have three tower elements, given that we have stairs and elevators in the various entrances to the garage. As well as, condition-wise, we have a condition in there as well, which may require some modification, but using stone in lieu of the brick that would then either match or coordinate with what the library is proposing. So we wanted those to be consistent, as well as an additional details moving forward. Additionally, then, there are waivers related to uses and occupancy. There are code requirements along a principal frontage street that require commercial uses to be on that ground floor, as well as then occupied space, and then parking, not permitting parking within a structure along a principal frontage street, which in most locations throughout Bridge Street, those are- those requirements are wanting to ensure an activated streetscape, whereas in this instance, along Rock Crest Parkway, we are adjacent to the grounds of remembrance. So obviously, wanting to keep that strictly to the parking piece of that and not incorporate other uses or encourage other uses at this point as part of that, that's not part of our proposal. So waivers are required for that. As part of the updated materials, we asked the design team to look at, again, reminding us how we got to the metal fin design, in terms of materials, and look and looking at, when looking at that material, were there other options in terms of color variation or spacing of those fins, all of that which was provided within your materials this evening, as well as then looking at another material option, which Miguel will go over here in a minute, a terracotta material, which switches from the proposed vertical, excuse, yeah, vertical metal fins to then this terracotta material could be applied horizontally and provide a different material, different spacing, as an option. So staff has looked at that as another option, should council wish to see some additional studies about the materials of that. And as I said, Miguel can go through that for you. So there are 11 waivers requested as part of the basic plan for the garage, with then eight conditions. And then a third motion for that required reviewing body. So that's all I have from a staff perspective. I, like I said, Miguel is prepared to give a brief presentation about his part as well. Okay.
Good evening, council. Let's see here. Great. I'm not going to dwell very long on everything we've seen in the past. I'm going to dive directly into some of the additional studies and a little bit of the process as to how we got to where we were, and some of the studies we've done after hearing some of the public comments, comments from yourselves, and staff requested us to look at some of these materials, options, color studies, and so on. If you have any questions on any of the previous material, please stop me, and we can answer any questions. So first of all, kind of a, we really rethought the material slide to be a little more appropriate to the site, to the specific site, in relation to what we had previously. So really, looking at, for example, the stone, because the idea is still that we have, really, the stone is a material that we see as a tie-in, a visual tie-in between the two buildings. So that's something that we would want to use as well, in relationship to the library. And again, it's this idea that represents some of the, you know, dry-laid stone walls that we see here on the site. The first one there is the area off of, what is it, High Street and 161. Second one is really what we see directly to the north at the Vets Memorial Park. And then really looking at the, how we really arrived at the idea of the metal fins, which is really more about texture than really an apples-to-apples comparison. So it was really looking at some of the roof lines, some of the patina roofs, some of the texture facades, you know, some of this vertical siding, wood siding, and some ideas of reflection of the river and so on. Last time, there was a question about projects that had successfully installed a green screen in the area, and I wanted to share that with you briefly as well. Nothing particularly in Columbus, but there are some examples in the region, similar weather and so on. And Chicago, there's a really nice application here at the Rush University Medical Center, which has these kind of vertical fins that grow the plant material. Also, one other thing that we found is that English ivy actually is a evergreen, so that would stay, you know, throughout the year. I think that was a question that we discussed last time as well. And some others in, you know, Illinois, Pennsylvania, and some other areas of the I wanted to talk a little bit about how we actually got to the solution that we have been presenting so far. We really look at several studies of different alternatives for skin. Massing is always going to be very similar, because it's a garage. But as far as the skin application, you know, we really looked at several ideas, some horizontal, applying a horizontal material, some had to do with perforated metal panel that actually expressed itself along the, again, a little more horizontally along the garage. And then finally, we also had looked at, you know, what we arrived at in working with the city and staff, we really determined, and, you know, the CML team, we determined this was the most appropriate to the site, and again, the cohesiveness of the design of the two buildings. Again, these are images we've shared before. Trying to show some idea of showing a little more of the skin, as it currently is proposed, and adding the trees, as we envision this to happen in the future. Again, we have incorporated the stone in lieu of brick already to the design, and that would be the case for applications throughout. For example, on the north side as well here. Again, with and without trees. And again, just some of these studies that we did were born out of a lot of the commentary, public, council. So the first thing we looked at was different fin spacings, to see just how open or dense the building could be. And really, there is a point at which the building starts being too open, as far as what you see behind it, which is all the concrete, crash rails, and so on. So this is something that we studied, as well as a little bit of difference in the patterning that we have currently. We also did some color studies, looking at very different things. One was an idea of, you know, the fins being sort of double-sided color. Another had to do with a kind of a graded, kind of a gradation of color from one end to the other, and circling around. Some subtle color variations from the white. We really do think that there is a cohesiveness currently to the design and a synergy between the two. So we do tend to recommend that it be a very subtle color, if not the white. But that's another option that we studied, was a kind of a variation, a very limited variation in color with some more earthy tones. And then again, looking at, we were also requested to look at a horizontal or an application of a kind of a terracotta element. So we went back to one of the original concepts that we had studied. In this case, this was actually metal. But this idea that there's a more horizontal type of application to this, and for this concept, that really relates more to the idea of the dry-laid stone, that kind of texture. So we looked at this concept, which, you know, one of the nice things about this is you can really control how much you really do see behind it or not see, as far as the concrete, the structure. So you can really provide the transparency more specifically where we want it. We still have the green screen of the base. And again, this is, you know, again, the idea is that it's a quieter building, and again, this kind of more horizontal application, you can start to see the transparency at the two intermediate floors, kind of simple massing of the tower here, the entry, and a little more, a look at the courtyard. And we will continue to study these options and these refinements to the design, and I think the intention is to make a recommendation later this summer. But we wanted to share with you where we were at this point, and some of these additional concepts that we have looked at. Also, I must say, I'd like to request the record show that this is really the Dublin City Garage, not the library garage. There is parking that is, you know, used by the library, but it's limited. It's really a public garage. Thank you.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleiter.
Yes.
Samoros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Questions?
Can you affirm for me the height of the towers, of the tallest tower? What is the height to the tallest portion of this?
The tallest portion, bear with me for a minute, here's a second. At the, that would be at North Street, the tallest portion would be at 45.9. And the reason for that is the elevator and the overrun that we have. So we've really, the decision was to, we have two elevators, so we have really two towers that would have that height. But we have a third tower that's simply a stair, and the decision was to keep them all consistent, as opposed to having, you know, taller and shorter pieces.
So I guess many of my comments will be the same. Our code limits us to two and a half stories. This is four. We just saw a building that was 42 and a half feet tall, and I think it was too tall. And now we have a building that's 45 feet, nine inches tall. And we're just getting started. We've got all of the blocks to the, you know, proposed redevelopment. I'm assuming that in perpetuity, Rock Crest isn't going to dead-end where it's going to dead-end at the end of this parking garage today. We have disengaged the street network completely. There's probably nothing more pedestrian-unfriendly than a treatment of the base of a parking garage, because there's other, you know, I don't know who's going to walk in and out of this along Rock Crest. So Rock Crest is going to become really a pedestrian-dead street, because this block is, we already had to pass waivers to make this block too big, and now we have a block that is too big, that's disengaged from the pedestrian activity. We have the parking garage up on the streetscape of Rock Crest. I guess my question to you is, and to all of us, is how are we going to move from here? How are we going to get more appropriate scale? So we do have genuine historic buildings in, across the street, and immediately to the south. How are we going to not make this look like the movie Up? Or are we going to make it look like the movie Up, where the historic thing, the thing that existed first, goes away, so that subsequent things come in? How are we going to get back to scale? Where are we going to do that? What's the transition from an incredibly contemporary architecture library to an incredibly contemporary architecture library? What comes next? It's going to have to be big. How about behind it? How about where the Darby Street lot is today? I suspect we're not going to want to put a shorter building behind these really tall buildings. So how tall are we going to let it get there? I don't think anybody is going to want to build a building that's just going to look into the side of a parking garage in perpetuity. How are we going to make these transitions? I guess that's a rhetorical question. All of my comments from previous stand about height and scale and massing, all of them stay.
If I may? Yeah. With all due respect, sir, I just have to say, I'm just not a fan of the fins. I understand, you know, that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. You know, there's a real challenge with this parking garage. I don't, I don't see how we can make it smaller. I don't see how we can avoid the waiver with respect to the block size. I mean, I don't know whether we're going to split the garage into two. You know, just, it doesn't make sense from many perspectives, you know, to do anything other than what we're doing with respect to the size of the garage, you know, making maximum leverage of the land that's available to us and, you know, what's occurring here with the library. I think one of the things that we haven't said enough with respect to our share of this garage here is, you know, I mean, essentially, we're doing this without having to invest in the land, am I right? I mean, you know, if we were to move this, I mean, you know, we've heard public comment that, you know, this isn't the place for it. I think most of us agree that a parking garage is necessary. There's been a demand for it for some time, and if it wasn't here, it wouldn't be very far from here. You know, and unless we build it on the lot that we own presently, which isn't large enough, you know, we're going to have to buy more land. So, you know, I think there's, you know, some, you know, advantage that perhaps maybe we haven't acknowledged enough, you know, about, you know, the benefit of this, I'll call it free land here. But back to the fins, I think the vertical treatment there, in my view anyway, accentuates the height, which, you know, I'd like to see us do everything we can to, you know, bring the eyes down. So, you know, I think it's very creative, you know, what you've proposed here, and I appreciate it. I certainly mean no offense, you know, but I'd like to see further exploration of a more horizontal treatment and the terracotta option. Thanks. Thanks.
I think in all fairness, you know, we had to provide so many libraries, so many spots for the library, and that was a requirement because of them losing their parking space. And we'd all be fools if we didn't admit that downtown Dublin, almost any night, it's almost impossible to park at the public parking area. It's just filled up. And so people, whether it's fair or not, I see them all parking over on the library's property. And with the new stimulation of the downtown, the kind of development's going to happen there, the number of restaurants and the other activities, we'd be absolutely crazy not to embrace this building at this scale because we're going to need the parking. And I think we all have to be honest with ourselves and come to that. So that's just what I want to say. If there was some way to pull the building down using sycamores or some kind of element, tree element around it, I don't know if you have the space, you probably don't, but you can take that building down quite a bit by adding a tree that's eventually going to get 50 feet. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing.
Sure.
I think that we do have the opportunity, we have the Darby Street Lot, we have other land that we currently own, that we don't have to make this library to the scale. We don't have to solve the entire downtown parking project with one structure. We have the opportunity to make more pedestrian-friendly, more human-scale buildings that park cars, and we could build them sequentially. We could start the construction of this that would serve all of the library's needs and probably also accommodate as many spots as we have in the Darby Lot. And then construct another more appropriately scaled parking garage on that piece of property. I'm not proposing at all, and I don't want to be painted as a person who doesn't want to solve the parking problem. I do want to solve the parking problem. I just want to solve it to a scale that's appropriate for the area so that we don't, we've worked so hard to try to build a pedestrian-friendly environment in that part of our community. And we're dismantling the pedestrian scale, and I just wanted to make that point. I want to solve the parking problem, too. I just would prefer to do it in two buildings than in one gigantic building. And we already own additional space that could help us accommodate that.
Anybody else? No further comments? Okay, so I guess we're going through the same process here we did with the library. I'd make a motion that we approve the basic site plan with the seven original conditions and the one amended condition. Is there a second?
I second.
Ma'am?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
I make a motion that we approve the 11 waivers as requested. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
No.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
No.
And the determination of the required reviewing body determination, feature development plan review and site plan review, I make a motion that that be city council. I would just put an asterisk that I would support the participation of ARB, at least in an informal way like we did with the library. I would like those people's input and feedback before we vote.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Sammeros Grooms?
No.
Ms. Sailey?
No.
Second reading, public hearing ordinance 18-17. Ma'am?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to dedicate a 0.657 acre portion, 0.224 acre portion, and a 0.397 acre portion of Dublin-owned reserve area property located at the intersection of Avery and Brand Roads to public right-of-way for the public purpose of constructing roadway improvements.
Dana?
Yes, this ordinance has to do with the proposed construction of roundabout at the intersection of Avery Road and Brand Road. As the title mentions, the city does own property adjacent to that, and this has to do with the conveyance of that public property. The ordinance have passed would allow me to execute the necessary conveyance documents to allow that to happen.
Questions from council? Nobody has signed in. Ma'am?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. ... Sorry, that's it.
Ordinance 19-17. Ma'am?
Amending section two, wage and salary structure administration of ordinance number 1517, compensation plan for non-union personnel.
Dana?
No change from when this was introduced?
Questions from council?
None.
Ma'am?
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-17.
Establishing the location amount of cash on hand for change funds.
David?
Yes.
How are you?
Good. No changes from the first time this came before you. It establishes change funds for the events department and increases our petty cash in administration. I can answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing, nothing. Ma'am?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And...
Ordinance 21.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner. Sorry.
What's going on?
Amending the annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017.
David?
This ordinance would amend the 2017 appropriation. There are no changes from the reading on April 10th. Staff request, council approve the ordinance, and I can answer any questions.
Questions from council? Any discussion? Ma'am?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
First reading ordinance is I make a motion that we suspend council rules of order and address ordinances 2617, 2717, and 2817 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And these are... Sorry. Accepting the annexation of 47.366 acres, more or less, in Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin. Ordinance 2717 is rezoning 47 acres from our rural district to PUD Plan Unit Development District for development of the site, with 73 single-family lots, approximately 21 acres of open space on the east side of Highland Court Road, north of the intersection, with Park Mill Drive under the provisions of zoning code section 153.050 and a preliminary plat for 73 single-family lots, right-of-way and open space in accordance with chapter 152 the subdivision regulations. And ordinance 2817 is authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement with Pulte Homes of Ohio LLC for the Adam Rose Woods development. And we need an introduction. Thanks.
Go.
Good evening, mayor members of council. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Nicole Martin, and I'm with the planning department. Before you this evening, we have a request for consideration of an annexation, rezoning, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, and infrastructure agreement. I wanted to give council this evening the opportunity to choose whether or not they'd like to hear the staff presentation at this reading or at the second reading.
Given the lateness of the hour, I would elect...
I agree with you. Second reading, we'll just do it at the May 22nd council meeting.
Fantastic.
Unless, is it in... Okay, public hearing. That was quick, okay. Resolution 26-17.
Authorizing the city manager into a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Capital City Lodge Number Nine regarding wages, hours, terms, and conditions of employment for employees within the police officer, corporal, and sergeant bargaining unit.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
Yes, this obviously has to do with the FOP collective bargaining agreement.
Can we timeout just a second, Dana? Were you guys here for that thing that we just went through and pushed up? Do you want to say anything? I don't want to make you come back. I mean, you guys...
(inaudible)
I just, we did that, and you started packing up, and I feel bad, so...
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. No, we'll make a recommendation on the...
Can you be back on May 22nd?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll at least buy him a cup of coffee or something.
Yeah, we'll get you something. We'll make it worth your while. Okay, Dana, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
So the staff memo highlights the changes from the previous FOP agreement, determines this agreement for three years, and the bargain unit has ratified the agreement. So subject to any questions, staff recommends approval.
Questions from council? Any discussion? Ma'am?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
And Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 27-17. Ma'am?
Adopting a statement of services for proposed regular annexation of 44.0 acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin.
Jen?
Council members, the Union County Commissioners have a hearing scheduled on this matter on May 16, 2017. For a regular annexation, the city must adopt a statement of services, which we've included, and we must submit it at least 20 days prior to the hearing. The resolution provides the city's assessment of services that will be provided to the area upon annexation, and that's detailed in your packet. We'd recommend approval tonight.
Any questions from council or discussion? Ma'am?
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Resolution 28-17.
Adopting a statement of services for the proposed regular annexation, 72.1 acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin.
Same deal, Jen, this is just Jacqueline Wesner.
Yeah, this is a second annexation petition, and the hearing is actually scheduled for May 23, 2017, but same statement of services detailed in your packet. Recommend approval.
Questions from council or discussion? Ma'am?
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yeah.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
All right, I make a motion that we suspend council rules of order to address resolutions 29-17 through and including 36-17 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Ma'am?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
The property owners, 2917 is Robert E. Williams II, 7608 Plain City Road, 3117 Ralph Smucker, 7500 Plain City Road, 3217 Jeffrey Weingarten, Virginia M. Acosta, 74953 to 7455 Cos Gray Road, 3317 Jeff T. Beckman, 7423 Cos Gray Road, and 7505 Plain City Road, 3417 is the Geiki Company, 7600 Feshal Drive, 3517 is Penny, 7495 LLC, 7495 Plain City Road, and Resolution 3617 is Brian Cunningham and Corinne Cunningham, 7515 Plain City Road.
Introduction. I'll introduce it. Thank you. Dana?
Yes, so this project has to do with a proposed roundabout at Cos Gray Road and State Route 161 or Post Road. City of Dublin, Franklin County Engineers' Office and Union County Engineers' Office are working together to construct this roundabout. As you may recall, we already have a cooperative construction agreement with these entities. The city of Dublin has been the main point of contact. These acquisitions all represent what will be needed for the project, a couple of which are complete for total takes. The city's hopeful that we can reach an amicable agreement with all the property owners, but this states our intent to appropriate and enables us to pursue the eminent domain process in the event we are not successful with our negotiations. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any discussion? Ma'am?
Ms. Sailey?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Ammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 37-17?
Resolution combating intolerance, negative stereotyping, and discrimination based on religion, belief, or ethnicity.
Nancy?
Need an introduction. Good evening, members of council. Resolution 3717 is a resolution that denounces intolerance and supports the city of Dublin as a diverse, inclusive, and welcoming community. Resolution 3717 provides that all citizens should be treated with respect and dignity, and staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
No, I just think this is great.
Yeah, it is now between the Martin Luther King Day discussion that we had and then Dana. How long ago was we met with them? You were there for the Indian community?
Yes.
10 days ago or so at the rec center?
Last week.
How long ago?
Last Thursday.
13.
I'm really proud of the staff in this council and the city that is dedicated to all these really, really important issues. Any other discussion?
Only, yes, I know you reference staff generically, but Nancy Richardson in particular, I think there's a lot more effort than what we see on the part of Nancy. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I thought that was a really nice event. It was well put together and well attended. I was...
It was.
There was a great team of internal staff that worked on it.
Yes, I didn't mean that, but...